Welcome to GV Wire's Forum with Candidates Running for Clovis City Council. I'm your host, David Taub, Senior Reporter with GV Wire. For the next hour or so, I'll be asking questions about issues important to the voters of Clovis. They will pick up to three names from a list of 10. Ballots are due back by November 8th. They're out right now, so make sure you vote when you get them. Thank you for watching live on CMac or GV Wire or watching on demand. Tonight, we invited five of the 10 candidates. We eliminated the number to foster a deeper debate and discuss the issues back and forth. A second debate with the remaining candidates is scheduled at a future date. As a disclosure, Dari Sessemi, the publisher of GV Wire and President and CEO of Granville Homes. Granville has contributed to the campaigns of Matt Basgal, Diane Pierce, and Drew Bessinger. We asked our candidates, please keep your answers short, about a minute or two, but there's going to be no hard time limit. And, you know, my only ask is that you don't talk over each other. You know, we'll try to get everybody's response to a question, but if you really need to get in there, you can always raise your hand. Now, let's meet our candidates. Joshua Fankow, he's 45 years old and owns insurance company Fankow Group Allstate Insurance. He grew up in Fresno, attended Fresno State, and has lived in Clovis for 17 years. He and his wife Kimberly will be celebrating 21 years of marriage this month, mazel tov. They have three children, 16, 12, 9, attending Clovis schools. Diane Pierce, she's 43 years old, co-owns entertainment company King Productions with her husband Jeremy Pierce. She grew up in the area, living in Clovis for the last four years. She's President of the Fresno County and City Republican Women Federated, and also serves on the Fresno County Civil Service Commission. Matt Basgal, he's 55 years old, and he's lived in Clovis most of his life. He served nearly 30 years with the Clovis Police Department, the last six as chief before his 2019 retirement. He and his wife Joanie have been married for 31 years, and with two daughters and a new son-in-law. Basgal also serves as Director of Safety and Security at the California Health Sciences University in Clovis. As a noted disclosure, GV Wire publisher Dari Sessemi serves on the CHSU Board. Dez House, she's 33 years old, grew up in Huron, but lived in Clovis when she attended Fresno State, and she has lived here officially for the last three years. She handles strategic partnership with energy company Site Logic. She and her husband have two young daughters. And finally, last but not least, Kyle Chaney, 48 years old, has lived in Clovis for the last two decades. He's a Realtor with Guaranteed Real Estate. He and his wife Allison have three daughters, all who have attended or attending Clovis schools. All right, let's get into the questions. We always hear the phrase, "Clovis way of life." I think you've said in one version or another, you believe in the Clovis way of life. But what does that mean to you? We'll start at the end. Joshua Fankow, what does Clovis way of life mean to you?
Yeah, so Clovis way of life to me just means that I enjoy where I live. I think it's a community that offers everything that I would want for myself and my family. It offers, it's a safe place, it's a clean place, it offers opportunity. It's a place where you can walk out your front door and get to know somebody, and know them by name, and say hi to them without any worry or any trepidation. I think it's a place you can drive in a short amount of distance and support a local business that you know the people that run the business. And it's just, it's a community that's based on everybody looking out for one another. It's having that support for one another. It's feeling comfortable where you're from, whether you're brand-new to the area or you've been living there your whole life. It's a phrase that gets used a lot, and I think oftentimes it can be misconstrued, meaning it has to look like one way. But I just think in generally, generally, it means it's a place that people love to live. It's a place they feel comfortable and a place that they are proud to call home.
Diane, what does it mean to you?
Yeah, I think, you know, people have asked that. They say, "In one word, how would you describe the Clovis way of life?" And I think community really is the right way to do that. And I think it's shown through all of the different events that Clovis has, whether it's the rodeo, or Big Hat Days, or Clovis Fest, where everybody comes together. And it doesn't matter what part of Clovis you're from, or even if you're not from Clovis at all. It's a very welcoming environment, whether you're strolling through the shops in Old Town, on Pulaski, or anything like that. There's just that sense of community, openness, welcomeness. And I think that's a big part of it. I think the other aspect of it, when it comes to community, is when you hear about our public safety. And we're known as one of the safest cities in the valley. And a big component of that is community participation. You know, you hear some of our law enforcement officials will talk about, if a crime happens in a certain area, will people come forward as witnesses? Well, in Clovis, they absolutely do, because that is part of the Clovis way of life. Community, looking out for each other, and everybody wanting what's best for that community.
All right, Matt Basgal, you've served the city of Clovis, longtime member of the Police Department, former chief. What does that phrase, "Clovis way of life," mean to you?
Well, I think everybody's kind of touching on it. It is community. It's community, it's teamwork, and it's pride. There is a lot of pride in people who live in the city of Clovis. Whether it's working with our schools, working with public safety, working in our neighborhoods. That's a big word that comes into play is, you know, it's not just the community, but it's the teamwork, it's the pride. And it's just that feeling that people have living in the city of Clovis. They, you know, when you move to Clovis, you have expectations that you're gonna, you know, the city's gonna be safe, the streets are gonna be clean, that you're gonna, you're gonna get along with your neighbors, you know? Although that doesn't happen all the time, the expectation is there that, you know, when you, when you buy a new home, or you move into the, to the area, that there's gonna be that feeling of pride and community spirit. So, that's kind of how I would describe it.
Dez, you're probably the most recent full-time resident of Clovis. What does it mean to you? Why'd you move in Clovis?
Opportunity. You know, it's opportunity for my children. It's, Clovis was founded on this, "If you build it, they will come." And we've done a really good job at that, and if you sustain it, we will grow. And, you know, the community aspect is huge, and I believe that as Clovis is growing and we're providing opportunity for our residents to work here and live here and thrive here, go to parks, spend times with the family that aren't necessarily gonna break the bank. That's a huge thing, you know? And public safety, the schools, it's, it all falls in line with opportunity. I believe that with my kids being two and three years old, I wanted to plant roots in a city that would love them back. And it's a testament through what Clovis does with, you know, from Big Hat Days to Clovis Fest to the farmers markets. They do everything in our city to engage our community members, and I want my daughters to grow up in a city like that.
Kyle Chaney, I'm sure you have a perspective as a real estate agent. When you're selling a Clovis home, you know, I'm sure that phrase comes up. So, from your perspective as somebody running for office, as a real estate agent, Clovis way of life.
It's a great point. We've been talking about community, and it's one of those, as a Realtor and being able to see why people are moving, it pretty much echoes the same things as why, what I feel it is, which is, it's safety, it's our school district, it's the pride that we have in making sure that it is not just average. We do go above and beyond. I mean, little things such as twice-a-year cleanups for, you know, trash pickup and things of that nature, that's not sustained in other communities. Being able to have the events that we have, we have world-class parks, and I would say world-class parks and trails, like what we're able to do with those, and making sure that they're planned appropriately so that people can access that at any time and feel safe accessing them. But safety in our school district are the primary things that I think encompass all of that, because it allows the community to feel safe to be out there. And when people are moving in, if they have children or plan to have children, it's the school district. If they don't have children, they are worried about their, you know, how safe does it feel? Where are the shop, where's shopping? Where's retail? Where are those things at? And it's planned in such a way that it's accessible pretty much wherever you live, as well as having the events and the community things that we've talked about, such as farmers markets, Clovis Fest, the rodeo, all those types of things together. But it's all focused in Old Town as well. So there's a unique tie-in to some of our older parts of the city that continue to thrive. So, that's what it means to me.
All right, Kyle, thanks. We know, we'll definitely get into the issues of public safety and planning. Those are major issues. But I want to find out now, what do you think the biggest problem is in Clovis? And what is the way you're gonna solve it? Diane, we'll start with you.
I think what I hear from people, one of the biggest problems, we have challenges. Like you say, we'll be talking about public safety and some of those things. But I think one of the biggest problems that I continue to hear, whether it's from business owners or from families in their neighborhoods, is the increasing homelessness crisis. It is spilling over into Clovis. And it's one of those things that if you don't get on it immediately when it's first starting, you're gonna be behind and you're never gonna be able to deal with it. And we see what happens in cities where that is what they, what they do. And so, what I would do about it is really just continue to focus on making sure that we're identifying the different groups that comprise that population of people who are facing homelessness. And if it's people who are just temporarily down on their luck, obviously, there's a lot of services and things that we need to get to those people so they can get out of that situation and back on their feet and back to being the contributing members of society that they want to be. We also, of course, have people who face addiction problems and mental health situations. And again, we are a community that has incredible services for those people to get them the treatment that they desperately need and that the compassionate people of this area want to see them access. And so, I'm committed to making sure that, whether it's through the Fresno Mission and their incredible city center that they're working on right now, that's gonna be like a clearinghouse for all the different organizations that can work with these people and help them out of that situation. Or whether it's the Pavarello House or any number of other groups that offer those services, that we make sure that they access them, that it's easy to do. But there's also another group.
We'll definitely talk a little bit more about homelessness this moment.
Sure.
Matt, Matt Basgal, you know, what's the top issue facing Clovis and what's your solution to that?
Well, I think one of the top issues is, you know, if we're gonna talk about public safety in a little bit, I'll hold off on that. So, but another issue facing us is actually getting our development in retail done. We need to bring jobs to Clovis. So, we're building the rooftops, we're making great houses, we've got great neighborhoods. But we also gotta provide services to everybody. And if those services are through, you know, developing out our retail centers, you know, fixing the Sierra Vista Mall, making sure Shaw Avenue was viable, you know, some of our other areas of town, we really need to focus on getting that part, because that creates jobs. And the more jobs we can get, the more, the more revenue we can keep in town, and, you know, then we can sell more homes and be more viable towards public safety and getting those retail dollars. So, I would like to see a lot of the areas that are currently vacant and/or haven't been developed yet get developed for retail.
All right, Dez, we've heard homelessness, we've heard development. What's your top issue? What's your solution?
It is economic growth and development, because ultimately, you cannot help the homeless or help public safety if there's not the funds there to be able to sustain the need. So, I believe that through working with, you know, our Economic Growth and Development Department and as a governing council, what we need to do is find who works best with us. It's not always going to be a big box store. It could be a manufacturing job. A lot of engineering firms are actually coming into Clovis because it's easier for their, their employees to come to work. So, it's about finding anybody and everybody that can come in and generate revenue. That way, at some point, you know, we can do everything that we can to make sure that's not passed on to our citizens through a tax measure, because ultimately, funds are what keep the city growing. And that is, should be everybody's top priority.
All right, Kyle, what's, what's your top priority? What's the problem? What's your solution?
Great. My top priority, obviously, would be public safety, but as we're gonna talk about that in a moment. It is back with economic development and how we are actually balancing our growth, making sure that, we're assessing the general plan and the specific plans beneath that, that it's working in the way that we designed it. You know, those are built to be 15, 20 years out. 20 years ago, let's just say, the internet was relatively new. We didn't have smartphones. There's a lot of things that change that we aren't necessarily, we need to make sure we're going back and doing that so that we have the right type of job growth and economics. We have a ton of retail, when you look at the last city plan, the economic development, like the summary of it, and really reading it. We've got retail, but we have a very highly educated population base, and we don't have the right types of jobs coming in. So, we have a net migration of jobs out of Clovis. Trying to make sure that we are focused on bringing the right jobs into the Economic Development Team and focusing on that, I think will solve most of those other problems, with public safety still being my top priority.
All right, Joshua Fankow, what's the top issue that you want to tackle?
Yeah, I think Clovis is many times a victim of its own success. Clovis has, people have moved here in great numbers over the last 10, 15 years and over time, largely in part because of the things we talked about. It's a safe community, it offers great schools. So, we have people moving in here in droves. But at this point, we need to start looking forward to making sure that our growth is sustainable. And the only way we're gonna do that, like we've talked about before, or we've talked about here already, is through economic development. And I think it's going to be very important that we get very proactive in making sure that over the next 10, 20 years, we have a very strategic plan in place to make sure that we're recruiting companies, employers, into the area so that we can continue to sustain our growth here in Clovis and provide the types of services that people come to expect. Police officers showing up at your front door, a fire department that can show up in an emergency response, whether it's health-related or medical-related or, or a fire response, to keep clean streets, to make sure all those services are there to help aid the homeless or those people that need, if there's an issue, something going on in the community. We have to have the funding in order to be able to provide that. To go back to the Clovis way of life, that's what people expect. And if we don't have the funding to do that as a, as a local government, then we compromise every aspect of what Clovis represents.
All right, I think we touched on the major issues that all candidates and especially that the voters are concerned about, public safety and development. So, let's get into public safety. Matt Basgal, that's your background. And you kind of came back into the public square, talking about how you fund the public safety. So, how do you evaluate where public safety, police and fire are right now in Clovis? And what would you say is the right amount of police officers?
Well, I think the right amount of police officers is significantly lower than it needs to be. And as chief, one of the things that I continually fought was trying to get more police officers on the street. You know, we went through the Great Recession in 2007, 2008, and the Clovis Police Department actually went from 116 officers down to 91 officers. And since that time, we, you know, we have spent trying to rebuild the Clovis Police Department. And so, you know, as far as the number of officers needed, I know there's been studies, and they say that, you know, it should be 160 officers. Well, there's no way they can afford that right now. But they do need to get up to about 130. And currently, they're authorized for 112. 130 officers in the city of Clovis would allow them to have the extra swing shift on patrol, which gets more officers on the streets, which allows them to get the calls for service. It allows them to increase their detective unit. It allows them to put people back on the magic team. It allows people to be back on, you know, the special enforcement team. So, you know, traffic units, you know what I'm saying?
Where do you get all that money to, you know, to fund what you want?
We want Measure B right now. That's a start.
And Measure B, of course, is the trans occupancy tax, a hotel tax. It'll be on the ballot also in November, it'd go from 10% to 12%, and estimated to raise about $500,000. So, even though it goes to general fund, you'd want to spend that money on police officers?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. I mean, and it's been a conversation for a long time, you know? Going back and talking about a Measure B campaign was back when I was chief in 2015, 16. So, the hard part is everybody does not like taxes. None of us up here like taxes. I don't like more taxes. But we have to have that conversation with, with the public. The public needs to be able to say, "What do you want? How are we gonna get to this point to where we can actually fund 130, 135 police officers?"
Right. Dez, what do you think the magic number of police officers is? How do you get there? How do you evaluate public safety? And where are you on Measure B?
I mean, I think Measure B needs to pass because it's a drop in the bucket of something that really, really needs to happen. As far as the magic number, you know, it's what is gonna make sure that our response times are in line with what our community members need. Our safe, our housing market is growing, and the more people that live here, the better. But we do have to be able to find a way to fund that. So, the magic number is, is the maximum amount that we can afford at the time, but always consistently advocating for more funds coming in. You know, just as, as Matt did say, nobody likes taxes. That's why my primary, you know, topic is economic growth and development, because without bringing in revenue sources, it's gonna be a tax measure. And we have to advocate for our constituents by making sure that we can do anything and everything possible before getting there. But once it's there, having full level of transparency as this is how, why it's happening, and this is what needs to be done. And it's not just police, fire as well.
Right. Of course, if I just say police, obviously, I mean police, hand, fire. So, Kyle, is there a magic number? I mean, how would you evaluate the state of public safety in Clovis? And is Measure B the solution?
Measure B is gonna be helpful, but it is not the solution. We need things similar to that, probably, that's gonna take place. And I would say that there's, public safety is better than it is, say, in other parts of the community. But it is, it's struggling. When you're out there talking to people door-to-door, you know, doing a campaign, and they're saying, "Hey, my car's getting broken into, and that never used to happen. I called Clovis PD, they came, but it was a little bit later than it used to be." That, that's an issue, and that's something that, from my perspective as a layman, not necessarily in the Police Department, once you kind of lose that aura that, hey, you don't, if you're a professional criminal, you usually wanna stay out of, out of Clovis. If now you feel like you can come and do that, that's a problem. So, from a standpoint of a minimum number, a minimum number would be at least one per, per thousand residents, right? It probably needs to be more than that. And really, I would defer to the chief, the police chief, and say, "What number would you want? What number do you need?" And really come to a consensus on that, and then determine the actual plan to make sure that we can fund that, whether that's, again, hopefully, it's not a tax measure. But there are certain things that we need to be able to know, that we, we have to be able to provide for. And in my opinion, if we don't have a safe community, it's gonna be much harder to attract economic development. We see in other parts of the state, businesses fleeing certain cities because of the way that the police force isn't responding or isn't capable of responding to certain issues that arise through, for public safety. So, at a minimum, it'd be one officer per thousand.
All right, Joshua Fankow, your views on public safety, where to get there, how to get there?
Yeah, I mean, just out of sheer sake of not echoing everything that's been said on that, there's no magic number, other than whatever is needed. Let's be real, whatever is needed. When it comes to public safety, there is no, the only wrong answer is not enough. And if you don't have the people there to take care, make sure people feel safe and respond to people in appropriate time, then there's a problem. So, you have to have enough people on there. We have to rely on our chiefs, both police and fire, to give us the expertise, as well as our city staff, to help us identify what that need is. So, we have to, we have to rely on their information. If they're asking us for more support because they can't meet up with the demands that our, that our residents expect, then we have to do whatever's necessary. If that means being real and honest with the, with the community to say, "The only way to take care of that in short term is to propose a tax to help take care of that, to make sure that you stay safe." We need to be honest about that instead of avoiding the issue in the short term. But as an elected official, it's absolutely our responsibility to make sure that we are planning to go forward, to make sure that we have enough funding for long-term sustainability. There's an old saying, you know, "When's the best time to plant a tree?" It was 20 years ago. When's the next best time? Today. And so, we can look at what hasn't been done, and we are at that point now, I believe, a critical point, where our chief has identified, a police chief has identified, that we have a shortage. We have a former chief here identifying that we are short. We need to do whatever's necessary to make sure that we don't have this same conversation 10 to 20 years from now, and we'll do whatever's necessary. And I also believe one critical part of, of public safety that we're not talking about is the support staff behind the police officers and the, and the fire department. There are people, critical people, that serve in office, dispatch, administrators, that provide services that support our police officers so that we don't have to have police officers off the street doing extra work. They can actually be out responding to the community needs. So, we also need to make sure that we're supporting our staff and the administration behind that as a part of a whole picture of public safety. That's why I'm very happy to be endorsed by the Clovis Employees Association, because we've had that conversation, the Clovis Police Officers Association, and the Clovis Fire, Fireers Association.
And real quickly, where are you on Measure B?
I'm fully supportive of it. But again, it's just, it's a, it's a short-term, minor fix, absolutely not the, the end-all solution.
All right, Diane Pierce, why don't you wrap it up on the police conversation?
Yeah. No, absolutely, there is a magic number. I was fortunate enough to get to serve on the Citizens Advisory Commission for Public Safety. And so, I understand where the shortages are. Matt laid it out pretty well in some of the specialty units, and certainly patrol and traffic. But what concerns me is that idea of how do we fund it? And I think there's really two parts of that. One is, in that Citizens Advisory Commission, we heard all about the shortage and the staffing and where we'd been and where we need to be. And we did a very cursory look at the city budget and never got to do that deep dive to see if there were areas that maybe there was some room to work, maybe there was additional funding that could go toward the police staffing situation. And so, when Measure B came up, I was very concerned, because what we're talking about, what was presented to the community and the commission was a $10 million a year problem. And so, what is going to be on the ballot is literally a drop in the bucket toward that. And as you mentioned, it isn't a special tax. It can't be specifically allocated to public safety. We have a council currently, and I think a future council that would certainly make sure that that's what it was put toward. But that's not by definition what this is. And so, certainly, there's still an issue here. My other concern when it comes to the actual number of staffing is just the fact that we have a, not the climate that we should have and not the atmosphere that we should have for our law enforcement across the country. Clovis, fortunately, I think, knows that we are fully supportive of our law enforcement. But the idea of recruitment to fill positions, should we be fortunate enough to be able to fund as many as we wanted, that's still an issue. And so, I think there needs to be some conversation about recruitment and making sure that people are wanting to come into the law enforcement profession. Again, that it gets the respect that it deserves.
All right. Homelessness was brought up earlier. So, let me bring you, ask you this scenario. We'll start with Dez here. If the homeless are lingering in front of a school or a business, what should the city response be? And if there was gonna be a homeless shelter built in Clovis, what part of town would you put it in?
You know, first and foremost, our kids need to be safe. So, the response should always be to address any issue that is gonna be a liability to our children, because if we are not adequately protecting them, it could trickle into a variety of other factors. The response with homelessness needs to be proactive, and it needs to be quick, and it needs to be concise. Should there be a, a homeless shelter built in Clovis? It needs to, we need to look at the demographics and where the need is most, because if you build it in one part of town, but they're lingering on another...
You're the council person. So, they say, "We're building homeless shelter." Where's your vote to put it?
So, I mean, there are a couple of areas that I think need, need homeless shelters. And I think that where we're seeing a lot of them kind of linger is closer to where we have our creeks and where there's adequate freeway access, where they can kind of hang out under. I wouldn't, I don't, as far as where the parcel is, there's nowhere there to build them. So, you have to go back to the general plan and make sure that we're not taking up a parcel that's zoned for construction or commercial development that's gonna take away from a potential revenue source in order to, to house, because it would perpetuate poverty to give them somewhere to stay and not somewhere to potentially work that's within walking distance. So, it would really, yes, I am the council member, but I do, I would be working with a governing board and with a staff that has been dealing with this for years. So, it would be an input from everybody that would be needed.
Right, Kyle Chaney, a tent city pops up in a parking lot of a business. What should the city do about it? And then, where do you send them?
Well, the city should absolutely address it immediately, primarily probably through law enforcement, just to see what's going on, take care of the situation. And again, as we've talked about already, there are other services, if it's an addiction or mental illness, that, that the community itself provides, and taking them there. If there was a opportunity to build something similar to what you mentioned in the last question, I agree, it's not like, hey, it's gonna go right here. You're gonna have to look at it and study it. I'm not saying the study's gonna take two, three, five years. It's gonna really look at the general plan, what are the issues? And plan for the future of where's the best place to locate that that meets the needs for all, all citizens, not just the homeless in this case, and not just the business owners in this case. Where's the best place? And that's not something I, you know, somebody can say, "Right here, right now, that's what's gonna happen." It's gonna take a lot of expertise from city staff and other organizations that deal with this on a day-to-day basis, and they know, you know, some of the things that are gonna be the best way to help the homeless and to help alleviate the issue. A lot of the issues have, typically have to do with either not being able to afford where you, where you can work or where you live and work, or there's a mental illness or an addiction issue. So, it's not just a one solution fits all. So, it's making sure that we look at what the complexities of the problem are and address it that way.
All right, Joshua Fankow, homeless are popping up in a place where they shouldn't be. How should the city respond to it? And where would you place a homeless shelter in the city?
I think by and large, Clovis has done a great job of respecting property rights of property owners, first and foremost. I believe that, again, safety is critical, not only for the individuals surrounded by, maybe the homeless individual, but also for the homeless individual themselves. Being out on the street is not safe. It's not good for them, it's not good for anybody around them. It's absolutely not fair for property right, or property owners to have to be subjected to somebody else just either squatting on their property or, or laying a tent city right next to them. I believe Clovis has done a very good job historically of managing that. It's become more of an issue, more prevalent over the last three years, again, It's become more of an issue, more prevalent over the last three years, again, because of the pandemic that we've dealt with, changes in the, in the laws that have caused early release for people that are imprisoned, and we've got people out on probation that can't be found, while they don't have a place to live, they're living on the streets. So it's, it's been more a recent issue that we've seen it to the, to the level that it's at right now, and I think that's something, it caught everybody by surprise, unfortunately, the people in our local services, at the speed and the ferocity of which that problem has really hit our community. And I don't believe that they were properly set up to be successful to be able to address the situation. I believe our police officers have done a remarkable job of dealing with it. I've been in a situation myself personally where I've had to make a call because there was somebody that was causing a disturbance in a business establishment. Called them, they handled it with humanity, but they took care of the problem. They can't leave the person where they are, and they shouldn't. And then ultimately, as somebody that serves on a nonprofit, the Fresno Mission, that deals with this type of problem on a day-to-day basis, it's a problem all around. It's a, it's a complex problem that none of us are going to be able to solve here in a debate. We're not going to be able to solve by ourselves as city council members. This is something that we have to engage community-based organizations that live this daily. Diane talked about Fresno Mission and the city center project that's happening in Fresno. Just because it's not located in Clovis doesn't mean that we can't partner with Fresno and the Fresno Mission and what's going on in Fresno to provide great solutions for the homeless and give them life-changing opportunities to come out of the situation that's got them where they are. And so we need to, we need to work with these community-based organizations, because if we believe that city council and city government is going to solve this problem, we failed right from the beginning.
Now, would you be willing to build a shelter within the city limits?
Absolutely, if that's what's necessary. But we're going to talk with our community-based partners and determine the best location. And again, the city center is a great illustration of what happened on there. Typically, what happens, you see this in Fresno, I've worked in downtown Fresno for many years of my career, homelessness typically gets put in parts of the city that nobody else wants to go to or is not very, maybe, maybe has kind of been down and out. What, what the Fresno Mission is doing is moving its, its location and its services into a place that puts the people that they're serving, the, the individuals that they're serving, in a place where they, again, can establish some humanity and where the rest of the community can have interaction with them. Because we talked about that, without that community and that bond, there's really no hope for those individuals. They're going to continue to be in the situations that they're at.
All right, Diane, you've heard Sunset talked about it in your initial response. What does, should the city do when there's a homeless popping up where they shouldn't be, and where would you build a possible shelter?
Yeah, so I already addressed, obviously, those who are just down on their luck, need some assistance, and those who are suffering from mental health issues and drug addiction. And the truth of the matter is that the services that those people need are in Fresno. It's not that we're shipping them out of Clovis, we're getting them to the services they need. Those are in Fresno, and they're fantastic at what they do. So that's the compassionate response to those people. When it comes to another group, who I think is really more of the difficult situation that people have to confront, it's those people who refuse services, who are choosing that lifestyle, they call themselves urban campers. And then, of course, we have criminal vagrants as well. And those are the people who need to be made aware that Clovis is not the place for them. We are not going to put up with that kind of behavior, because we also respect the humanity and dignity of our business owners, of our families, our neighborhoods. Public safety is important, and Clovis people deserve to have that and expect that. And so if you need help, we are the most compassionate people and want to get you that help. But if you don't, then I'm sorry, this is not the place for you. And as far as a homeless shelter in Clovis, I don't think one is needed here. These people need services, and those aren't here in Clovis.
All right, Matt, that will conclude with you on the subject, you know, when, when the homeless are camping in front of a school, business, park.
Right, well, I mean, the homeless issue in itself has, has kind of progressed over the last several years, but I will say, one of the actions for the police department was always to encounter a homeless person and see if there's resources for them available first, right? Are you willing to take these resources? Can we, can we take you to the shelter? Can we take you down to the Pavarello House? Can we give you a bus ticket? What is it that you need to help you get off the streets? And I'm going to say 90-plus percent of the time, that service is refused. And so sometimes it's, well, okay, then the next result is, are they under the influence of something? Is it alcohol? Is it drugs? Is it mental health? So you do evaluations to determine what's best for that person, but also what's best for the community. So a lot of times, it ends up in an arrest, or some... We had an officer assigned shift to, as a... And so the Clovis police officers know who everybody is, they deal with them on a regular basis. So, you know, there's kind of that, you know, hey, you can't be out here, and they'll be on their way most of the time. For those that are under the influence, then they take them to jail. So, which isn't the optimal response to this, but that's really the only enforcement action we have. I will say, one of the biggest problems we ran into is when the state changed the laws on drugs. When the state said it's no longer a felony to possess a, you know, cocaine or methamphetamine or heroin, we really started seeing more issues, because we could take somebody who was under the influence, get them to a drug court, and then hopefully get that person into a rehabilitation situation. The problem we run into now is, you give them a ticket, they don't show up in court, they never get in front of the drug court. The judge who's in charge of that, you know, Judge Chicknick at the time, she was, she was amazing trying to get people help. But she told me in a conversation that it would take eight to 10 times to get somebody in front of her before she could get them in a rehab center. So it really is a big factor with the homeless population. So until we can figure out that part, you know, from a state and a local level, to solve the problem.
Right, and real briefly, if there was a homeless shelter going up in the city Clovis...
I wouldn't support that right now.
Okay. All right, we are about halfway home here, so take a breath, we'll ask you a quick fun and games question, so a quick response here. We'll start with Josh in the corner, we'll just go down the line. What's your favorite restaurant in Clovis?
Oh, you have to pick one?
Just one right now.
Oh, man. All right, House of Juju, if I have to pick one right now, House of Juju.
Diane, favorite restaurant?
Luna Pizzeria.
Okay, so I got 500 Club, Luna's, Apple. You can't say one in Clovis. I was a cop. They're all great.
Favorite doughnut house? Don't answer, don't answer. Dez?
Biscuits and gravy.
Wherever Matt's fine. It's a toss-up between the potatoes at Luna's and I would, or the potatoes at Juju, and I would be...
I have to throw out a couple of others. Come on.
There are tons of them I would do.
Depends on what meal you're asking.
One of our locally-owned restaurants.
Test your knowledge, favorite athlete from Clovis?
Again, with these, you're, you're trying to divide us. Boy, I, I'm going to have to pass for a second, I can't even, I mean, there's so many.
Monica, you got...
Jenna Prandini.
There you go, that's a good one.
Yeah, I was going to say Jenna Prandini, and she's awesome right now. Today's her dad's birthday, happy birthday.
Yeah, you know, Jenna's getting out, but Joey and Frankie House are on the up and coming, they're two and three soccer on Saturdays, check them out.
Kyle, your favorite Clovis...
I would say Bryce DeChambeau in golf.
Hey, I didn't get to say one, Zach Follett, even though he's not playing anymore.
There you go. And last one, favorite Clovis events?
Oh, man, another one. You know, I love, I'm, it's, I'm going to cheat, again, Clovis, Clovis athletic events, I love them. I love how the community comes around that and rallies around it.
I will be good and pick just one, the Clovis rodeo.
That's an easy one.
I'm going to pick two, Clovis rodeo and high school football. My nephews are playing for Buchanan right now, and it's amazing.
Dez, your favorite event?
Definitely the athletics, but Clovis Fest is really cool, because you get to see the local vendors come out and, and thrive.
I'd have to go with Buchanan Soccer, my daughter's at, my youngest daughter's still playing there.
Which is my favorite athlete.
And then, past that, it's, it's a toss-up between the rodeo and the farmer's market. The farmer's market, because it just continues for the whole, you know, spring through summer, but...
Okay, let's get back into it. The other... Where are you going to build? How are you going to build everything that surrounds that? It's a complex topic, but we'll try to simplify it, break it down. So we'll start with you, Kyle. What businesses do you want to bring to Clovis? Be as specific as you can, and how do you make that happen?
You know, I, I think we need to, to really... Industries, finance, engineering, manufacturing, healthcare. We have a, we have the best school district, or one of the best schools in the entire state, if not the nation. We have a highly educated population compared to the, to the region, and it kind of gets overlooked that the, you know, Central Valley is considered, because we're based in Ag, that we're not necessarily have as educated population base as we do. And since we do, really tying into those types of professions and creating opportunities for those possessions to want to be here and to grow here, it, it's important. I think what we go about that is, looking how we do our development from, on the commercial side, there's residential development and there's commercial development, and we've always, Clovis has always been a pay-as-you-go, and sometimes that's three to four, five times more expensive for somebody that's going to do a commercial-type development to start a project, and they have to wait for reimbursement years down the road. In a situation like this, that, that we may be going into recession, we may not be, depends on which talking head you're listening to, there's concerns about people wanting to make that commitment. Clovis needs to be willing, at least to talk about investing in itself, whereas in the past, it's always been, somebody else is going to do it, and we're, we'll be okay with that. Not saying that we change that, but we have to be open about that discussion, about is it time for Clovis to invest in itself and create opportunities in the general plan that, that exists for the right type of zoning, so that we can actually invest for economic development for these types of industries that we're looking for.
All right, we'll say that, that was a lot, but so is development. So we'll try to focus on just what jobs, you know, what, what industry you would bring, you know, what's the future of Clovis work? And Josh, we'll hear from you.
Yeah, I mean, I have my own opinions, right? I'm a business owner, I, I have a sense for what I think would be great for Clovis, but I think we make the mistake if we believe that on city council, that we're going to go ahead and dictate what jobs should be coming into this community. I think our job is to make sure that as the markets change and as business needs change and people are looking to employ people and open up businesses, we need to be, have our finger on the pulse at all times and be ready to respond quickly. That's our number-one job, is be able to ready, ready to be, to respond to the demand of the market. I've seen other cities go out there to market and say, we want this. Well, guess what? In two years, that, that doesn't even exist anymore. And we would make the mistake of investing in something that it's not our job to determine what should or should not be in that community. Now, there are certain things that I believe would be great. I've said for many, many years about just the situation with his wife and the treatments that she's had to go through. For so long, people have had to drive to the Bay Area or Southern California to get medical... Real to start seeing that in our region, we have world-class medical professionals, medical services available so that our residents can stay nearby to get treatment that they need. So I think the medical community is another area that we can continue to expand, not just the services, but education for medical professionals, nursing programs. We've got a measure on the ballot right now that would invest into the future growth of nurses and in the medical field. I think medical technology. One of my supporters, a good friend of mine, is actually developing a very high-end technology firm for dental, for his dental practice. He's taking it around the globe and, and selling this technology to other dentists. I can't wait until the day comes when he needs to have a large facility to be able to produce the technology and, and get that out to the world, and it should...
Josh, I think we'll move on.
That's good. All right, I could go on all day about this.
We'll, we'll hear from Diane now. Diane, what's the future of bringing jobs to Clovis? What kind of jobs, what sectors would you aim for?
Yeah, I think one of the things you need to be able to rely on your city leaders to do is not so much pick winners and losers, but to look at trends and patterns of success. And I think when you look at Clovis, what you really see, and Josh was alluding to it, is you have Clovis Community Hospital, and you have Clovis Health, California Health Sciences University, and they're right nearby each other along 168, fantastic corridor. And right now, the zoning for that is Research and Technology Park. There were some ideas when that was done about what that could be that haven't really come to fruition, but I think if you focus that energy on businesses that could collaborate with those two institutions and the success that they've already had, that's where you're going to see continued success. And so I would focus on, specifically that area even, trying to incentivize other medical businesses, again, that could kind of collaborate with them, produce the supplies that they need, partner with them in whatever ways that they would need to do to further what's going on at the university or the research and everything that goes along in conjunction with the hospital as well.
Matt, it seems like medical technology is a popular answer.
Yes, it is.
So what do you have to say about it?
Well, I agree with everything they said about the medical technology, and especially, you know, working for California Health Science University, I see the future of, of the students there that are just putting in so much time and effort to be doctors. And the, and the concept of being able to develop our own doctors and keep them locally is huge. I'm going to, I'm going to say number two, sorry. But along with that, we need to develop bigger retail, right? You know, can we, what's going to bring in tax base for us? What's going to generate dollars for us? And so, you know, I mean, is it a Bass Pro Shop? Is it, is it something like that? Is it a Sportsman's Warehouse? Is it one of these bigger, you know, chains that we can bring to Clovis that can help us with, you know, some of our tax base type stuff? You know, we have the 168, it goes to Shaver, it goes to Huntington, it's a great recreational area. So, I mean, how can we feed off of that as well?
Do you fish?
I do.
Dez?
You know, it's equity through opportunity. We have to look at the demographics and the data to see what is growing and it's, it's trending, what is going to be needed, because it's not a six-month build-to-finish project when you're talking about anything with economic growth and development. You know, Hauser has done a great job at being the salesman of the city, and I think he is just, he's phenomenal at what he does. And he, he, you know, I believe that Clovis is the gem of the valley, and he goes out and polishes that diamond and, and says, this is why you need to be in Clovis, because we do have these opportunities to grow. But again, that turns back into our general plan and making sure that we're updating that to adhere to what our growth needs are going to be. You know, the research and technology is a tremendous opportunity and area right now, and we should be feeding into it right now if we can, but we have to look at every avenue. Is it retail? Because it's not just people that are going to be going into school. We have, you know, 16-year-olds that are entering the workforce, and we can be generating revenue from that as well. So I would just say, what's going to make the bank roll and what's going to do it well for Clovis.
Okay, we've heard, you know, what you want to bring in, but the question is, how do you do that? You know, are there certain regulations that need to be changed or cut? Investments in certain places to recruit these businesses? So Josh, what's your idea? You know, what's kind of the vision? You know, how do you build Clovis from the retail that we talked about, to the technology, to, to obviously residential? You know, what kind of gives you grand plan?
Well, I will just tell you that I think as a business owner, when my wife and I were looking at where we would place our business, I know we weren't in a position to go out and build a new building. I knew we weren't out there to build infrastructure. I knew that there weren't things that we could take on as a business. It was going to be hard enough for just for us to establish our business from the ground up and hire employees and, and try to do what we can to build up our business. So we had to find a place that that solution was already there, right? We found a building, empty space, we were able to make it ours, but we were able to move in and get our business going in a relatively short amount of time. It's no different for big box stores. They don't want to have to do all the infrastructure, they don't want to have to do all that extra investment on the hopes that it will work out. And it's easy to say, all these big box stores will come in and they'll do all that kind of stuff, they've got all the money in the world, but they're business people. It has to make sense financially. So from a, from a city's perspective, from a leadership's perspective, we need to enable and plant a vision within our city staff's resources to make sure that they know they can go out there and that we give them the, the leading to say, it's okay for us to invest in future growth. Do we just put it all out there and hope that the business does well and pays us back? That usually doesn't work out well. But I think that's, again, especially why I want to make sure that we're really working and really focusing on a lot of our home-based businesses and people that are here in our community already, because they're rooted here. They're not going to pick up their business and move. If there's a recession, they're not going to close down their store and move it and just say, we're moving on to other states and see you later. They're going to stay here, and they're going to do everything they can to keep that business here in our area. So I think, I guess to get back to the initial question of what can we do? We can make sure that the path of resistance is very minimal, and that we do everything we can to on-ramp the opportunity for these businesses to start making money as fast as possible. So if there's anything in the way, red tape, policies, regulations that would keep us from doing that, so be it. If we can work with developers, commercial developers, and talk with them about what's needed out in the marketplace, and how can we help invest in that growth, rather than putting a general plan together that says, this is what it's going to look like in this community, and then find out that there's no business that wants to be in that type of area or in that type of facility, then, then, you know, that would save us a lot of time, energy, and money.
All right, Diane, we talked about the what, we're talking about the how.
Yeah.
I mean, is there a regulation, red tape, that you think Clovis has that needs to be adjusted?
Yeah, I think that Kyle kind of said we need to be open to a conversation, and I think that's absolutely true, because when you look at commercial development, again, the developer is the one who has to front all of the money to bring the infrastructure into the parcel, and the return on that investment is much further out than, say, residential development. And the difference there too is you can spread that among all the different homeowners that are going to come and buy into that residential area. So the commercial is a much difficult, more difficult situation, but I think the city has two things. The first thing the city needs to do is absolutely pursue every single grant dollar that is out there. And frankly, I don't even care what it's for, because every dollar you bring into the city is something that then either frees up money to go somewhere else or absolutely pursues your initial intent as well. But again, the city also needs to be willing to partner with our commercial developers to make sure that the projects that are coming in, again, there aren't the roadblocks, there aren't the impediments, because frankly, if you have a parcel of land that's zoned for commercial and you have a developer who would like to develop it, the benefit to the city is to get it developed, because that's when the revenues start coming back in, and that's when the tax base starts to get its, its juice from what's going on. So leaving that land not developed is not even in the community and the city's best interest. So we have to be open to that conversation to see how the city can partner with them.
All right, so Matt, how do you turn these empty lots into residential? I remember that the new Costco that, that space, that was an empty lot forever.
Right.
They finally had, so how do you prevent that from happening in the future? How do you turn these empty lots?
Well, I think a lot of that goes back to getting a good economic development team, right? She mentioned Andy and the hard work that Andy Hauser does, but there needs to be more people. I mean, Andy is one person, and he has a very small team that he's trying to use to go out and, you know, he's also acting as a, you know, assistant city manager, and he's economic development. So we need to invest in our own team of people to do that economic development. So, you know, I've said several times where it's great that Sean Miller helps him and some other members there, but we need a bigger team to go out and get econ, or to go out and get businesses to come to Clovis and do that recruiting. Members of the city council, we'd be the support people for them. So, you know, if it, if I need to go have a meeting with somebody to help them, try to convince them to come to Clovis, I would be willing to do that. Of course, as all of us, I think we'd be willing to do as council members. So, you know, the big push is building a team, that team can get out there and really start recruiting the businesses that we think are going to fit the needs of those empty lots.
So does that the solution, kind of build up the development team?
I mean, it's, it's a team effort for sure, but I think ultimately you have to know what legislation is coming down that's impacting the red tape that is going to be in your city. The governor just passed where commercially-zoned properties can be now used for affordable housing, and that would take a revenue opportunity away from the city. So I believe that as a council member, you should be your city's largest advocate and your staff's largest advocate. So not waiting for, for directions from the top down. We do have some tremendous county supervisors and assembly people that are doing a great job, but they have to, you know, spread themselves pretty thin. You know, one, one opportunity I do have is through the professional organizations that I do serve on is I get to hear all the same conversations. So, you know, knowing the legislation that's going to impact your city and being able to put that proactive response together will help eliminate the red tape or at least proactively navigate around it. So having the team is phenomenal, making sure that as a council, we're working together and our vision for Clovis is there, and also full transparency with our citizens. You know, it's, it's our town, their town, that we're building out, so we have to make sure it's right for Clovis.
Right, and since you mentioned that, this is going to be my next question anyways. I'll let you answer this and also go around the line. Where should affordable housing in Clovis be built? I mean, I know that's been an issue, there's been lawsuits, so where would you put, where would you plan affordable housing?
You know, it takes looking at the general plan and where we're at now. Affordable means a lot of different things to a lot of different people, and there are tiers of affordable housing. So what I believe is we need to put affordable housing where there will be opportunity for them to work there, where they have opportunity to travel very concisely, because they may not have a vehicle or that may be a progression and progress. Like I said, if you do not focus on economic development and job growth, you will perpetuate poverty by building affordable housing and not giving these folks an opportunity to have a stepping stone instead of a foundation on how they're entering society.
Kyle, we're building all these issues. Your vision, how you cut the red tape, and where should affordable housing go?
Wow, we've got a whole bunch to talk about here. Thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, there's always red tape that we need to make sure that is just minimized, and I think Clovis does a really good job with that compared to, especially in the region. But one other thing that's important to remember, and Josh has mentioned it and Des has mentioned, Clovis is the gem, right? We are the gem of the valley, but we're not the only gem within the country. So when we're trying to bring in employers or other businesses from out of the area, California is notoriously a difficult place to bring people. So we have to actually up our game and make sure that we are, we have the right economic development team, and then we understand if we, you know, if we're going after retail or if we're going after medical sector, what do they need and what do they want? And then trying to figure out the cost-benefit analysis, like what can we do as a city to make that possible? How do we invest in it? And again, it's investing in it. A lot of times, people think, "Oh, we're just spending." I know, the city of Clovis needs to have the discussion about how do we invest in ourself and to make sure that we're able to bring in the right mix of jobs so that we can have the right mix of housing. Affordable housing, it's an interesting concept, because a lot of that, the development itself, you can zone all you want, but if you don't have a marketplace or a developer that wants to build it, it doesn't get built. So we have to look at the general plan and the land use and how that works through a specific plan to where it actually incentivizes the right developers so they can build it, so that we can have affordable housing. We could zone it all day long, but if it doesn't work within the community, so there's going to have to be a lot of discussion about where to build it and how to build it and build in a manner that's fits within the Clovis way of life. We've talked about, as our first question, what does that mean to us? It's making sure that we treat people with dignity, we understand where we can put these locations, but it best serves the entire community.
Let's hear from the rest on affordable housing. Joshua, where do you build it and how do you incentivize it?
I think you, I think you build it, it's not like you're going to have one part of town, you say, "Hey, this is affordable housing town, and this is where we're going to put all of the affordable houses, and everybody else gets to do what they want to do." It's going to be, it's going to be sprinkled in throughout our community, the reality of it. It's going to be based on a lot of conversations with our developers, understanding how they can build the type of housing that will not only work for the people that it's housing, but also for them, because they're in business, they're building, they need to make money, it needs to make sense. They have, they have a pulse for what is happening and where, where the needs are. They know, trust me, developers know exactly where the market is and who wants to live in a certain area, and if, and if we're finding that there's some fight back on that, it's probably because they know that that community really doesn't want to live there in the first place. It needs to have the services, it needs to have access to parts of the city that they want to be involved with, whether it's where they work, where it's shot, where they shop, access to public transportation. So we need to have, it's a complex conversation that needs to be had on an ongoing basis, and what we need to do is we need to engage those that deal with us on a regular basis, invite them to the table. I will say, when I hear the term affordable housing, I'm so glad we're in Clovis, because I work with people all the time, I'm in the insurance business. I insure people all the time that are relocating from other parts of the state, amazing professionals, people from all over the state that are, that are leaving the Bay Area and LA in droves. They might be leaving the state, but if they're going to stay in the state, they are moving to Clovis, and that's because our housing is affordable in comparison to everything else in California. I would just say, that's something that, kind of as an add-on, that's something that we need to continue to promote and market, because we are in California, and we all know that the challenges that present themselves by being in California for, for a lot of those stigma reasons, but Clovis is different, and we need to continue to market ourselves that way, attract the best of the best throughout the rest of the country, those throughout California, to realize that Clovis is different, we offer something better, and you should come and move here.
All right, Diane, I know there are specific builders who build affordable housing. Would you be willing to try to recruit them into Clovis, and where should those developments go?
So there's two parts to that. One is that considering the general plan is, has already kind of zoned for all of that stuff, and the way it is now is it's already there by right. So any developer who wants to come in and put an affordable housing complex in an area that has that zoning, doesn't even have to go before the council, doesn't have to go have any community input. And so that's, in a sense, part of the problem, and I think we need to kind of reassert the idea of local control in that, and one of the ways we can do that is to be a little more proactive in that. There are ways that you can pursue and incentivize affordable housing, but to do it for veterans, to do it for seniors, to do it for families with background checks and all of these different things, so that we as a community can say, "Absolutely, we want to be welcoming to these people and make sure that we're still doing it in a way that works for Clovis." And I also think that one of the benefits to Clovis, whether you're talking about residential development, commercial development, is the idea of local builders who have ties to our community. I think that's one of the key elements, that no matter what else happens, we need to go to those people first, because they're the ones, again, who already have kind of skin in the game here in Clovis and that Clovis way of life and our community. So I wouldn't necessarily be interested in trying to incentivize outside developers to come into Clovis for that type of project.
All right, Matt, why don't you close out this topic? How do you get more affordable housing in Clovis?
So I want to start off by saying, I think the word affordable housing just has kind of a negative connotation to it, and I think what we really want to say is quality housing. We want to be able to provide housing to everybody, and, you know, the general plan currently has areas designated throughout the city that, you know, where, and it's based on the size of the lots and the density and, you know, how many units you can put on an acre. Those things are already designated throughout the city on the general plan. So, you know, first of all, that's pretty much where they would go, but I really do believe, I mean, the, the sound of just, you know, affordable housing makes it, make it seem like it's so negative that, you know, I just, I'd rather use the term quality housing. I mean, we want everybody to be able to live in Clovis if that's where they choose to live. I mean, it's, it's an open community, it's a, it's a, we keep talking about the Clovis way of life, we want everybody to experience it. And so whatever we can do to bring quality housing to Clovis, I'm all for.
All right, well, I got a lot more questions, but we just don't have the time. So I'm going to ask just kind of a lightning round question or answer on this one, and then we'll get to our close. As we all know, all you're going to be on the same ballot. Would you support district elections in the future? Josh, brief, brief answer.
Brief answer? No, I believe that as an elected official representing the city of Clovis, I should be elected by the entire community, and I believe that I should have the accountability by the entire community, and I believe by districting it, you start creating subpockets of a community. Just because I live on one end of the town doesn't mean that I should only be beholden to those people in that part of the community. The entire community should be holding me accountable to what I say I'm going to do.
Diane, districts, elections?
I do not support district elections. I think Clovis has a diverse council currently and will continue to see that. And again, it is great that every single resident of Clovis has five council members who represents them and who can address their issues and they can hold accountable.
Matt?
Yeah, I'm against districts as well. I think it creates an us-versus-them type of situation. You know, we've seen it in other cities where they have districts and they just seem like they're fighting all the time over, you know, who gets what and who should get something, and, you know, having a council that we've been able to experience over the past years, you know, they've always worked together, they've always come up with solutions, and, you know, if there's parts of Clovis that feel like they need to be represented, the council's always there to hear them.
Does?
No, I don't. I've seen districts in larger cities do what they are intended to do, and that's great. I believe Clovis has a population size that was the size of about one of those districts typically, so you need to have every council member representing every constituent.
Kyle?
Yeah, no, I, kind of same thing, echo here. I don't, I wouldn't support it, I prefer not that to happen in any way, shape, or form, I would fight it even if there was a lawsuit to the best of our ability, because the, the idea of being able to be accountable to the entire citizenry is important, it's what is part of the Clovis way of life. You don't have a council that is at each other's throats by any means. They're trying to solve the issues that come before them, whether it be public safety, economic development, in a manner that's best for everybody, and when you come in and you go to a council meeting, you have the attention of all five members, not just one member.
All right, and as we come to a close, I want each of you to take one minute, 60 seconds, and tell everybody why you are the best candidate and what the people should know about you that we haven't talked about yet. Diane, one minute.
We have to be honest and really confront the challenge that protecting and maintaining the Clovis way of life moving forward is going to be increasingly difficult. Gavin Newsom has made it clear on a variety of issues that he wants to run Clovis, and so it's more important than ever that we elect people who appreciate the value of local control and are willing to fight for it. I'm really proud to say that every single person that the voters of Clovis have picked to represent them at the various levels of government have endorsed me. I have a diverse background, working, having worked in government, having owned a business. I understand the challenges that we face, and I have the relationships with the people at the different levels of government, whether it's the county, the state, or federal, that will give Clovis an amplified voice at the table on the issues that impact us. I hope that you know that I will be your voice and your advocate for the Clovis way of life and local control, and I hope to earn your vote November 8.
Matt Basco, what makes you the best candidate?
Well, I think my experience being, you know, living in Clovis, working for the Clovis Police Department for 29 years. I moved to Clovis when I was five years old, and I've been part of the Clovis community for, you know, 50 years. You know, that being able to bring that experience, bring the knowledge of the city, the working relationship that I've developed over those years with everyone, I think is really key in how we move forward in the city. So, you know, I'm a very approachable person, people, I'm willing to listen to people, I'm willing to communicate with everyone, so, you know, I think I'll be a, a great voice for the citizens of Clovis in that, you know, like I said, having been in part of Clovis for, you know, 50 years, I really do feel that, that I would be an excellent candidate for city council.
Does House, why should people elect you to this Clovis City Council?
You know, I chose the Clovis way of life. I saw what, what we have built as a city, and I decided that that's where I wanted to plant my roots and, and grow my family. I have a tremendous opportunity through my professional career to be at the table with these legislators, and when I say local control and wanting to be with the people, I am locally endorsed by our local firefighters, by our Clovis Employees Association, by the people that are voting. I have state and national endorsements as well, but I think what really matters is the community members of Clovis. I'm here to serve Clovis first and Clovis always, whether it be through economic development, public safety, anything that's needed, I would be an advocate for our community members to continue and to thrive, and I hope to earn your vote on November 8.
Kyle Chaney?
You know, I'm a valley resident my entire life, product of Clovis schools and the Clovis way of life. I know what that is, I've lived in Clovis for nearly two decades, last 19 years. My, my family, my daughters have gone through Clovis schools. And to me, part of what the Clovis way of life is, is our Clovis School District and how it actually impacts the values of the people growing up and what they are and how we, how we choose to recognize how to serve our community. It's, it's amazing what it is, so the reason I would do that is I'm a product of that. I understand what that means from the very beginning.